The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
I call to order the May 9th meeting of the Cary Town Council. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now at Agenda Item A3. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Just a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That moves us to the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. That's Item B for the benefit of those people watching our meeting on TV. We'll take a moment to read our consent agenda items. One vote approves all of the items. The consent agenda includes approval of the minutes, comprehensive plan amendment 13 CPA 01, which is the removal of southeast Cary Parkway extension from the transportation plan, and the Glen Air rezoning and comprehensive plan consistency statement. Mrs. Robinson will briefly summarize the operation committee's consent agenda items.
All right. Thank you very much. We're bringing several items to you from the Operations Committee under the consent agenda. The first item is the Western Wake Regional Wastewater Facilities Capital Project Budget Updates. The second item is inter-local agreement with Wake County. The third item is a bid award for the Green Level Church Road Project. The next item is the fiscal year 2013 Street Improvements. The next item is a mutual aid agreement with the Town of Apex. Our next item is a position classification and pay study. Then we have the Black Creek Greenway Phase 4 Request for Additional Funding. The next item is the budget adjustment for the North Carolina Recreational Trails Program Grant Award for Construction of New Hope Church Road Trailhead. Then we have the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Software Package. The next item is the Academy Street Improvements Project. The next item after that is the Landscape Improvements to the Performance Green on Academy Street. And the last, or excuse me, move to, the next item is the Contract Award Downtown Park Project. And the next item is for information only, oh, and we took it off. I apologize. Those are the items that we're bringing forward to, under consent, although I have to say, the contract award for the downtown park project, while we agreed to move it forward for that award, I thought we were going to have it for discussion.
Yes, I'm gonna cover that in just a second.
Okay.
Okay. And following up on that, we had a request to pull two items from the Consent Agenda Operations Committee, and we'll discuss those items when we get to G on our agenda. And those items are Item K, the Landscape Improvements to the Performance Green on Academy Street, and Item L, the Contract Award for the Downtown Park Project. Would council members like any other items pulled?
I have an item that I, I just can't get behind. I thought maybe I could go ahead and vote for it. I just can't do it. Would you like me to vote against the whole agenda? I don't need this item to be brought up for discussion. I know how I'm gonna vote. I'm sure you guys know how you're gonna vote.
You can just pull it, and when we get to that item, say basically that.
But do we need to push it all the way back to the end? Because I'm sure there's people who came just to hear that item, and we'd be keeping them here all night just to hear us.
We can do whatever we want to. That's what I was called.
Can we just break it out and vote on all of the consent agenda and then vote on that one item?
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. It would be the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the removal of southeast Cary Parkway Extension.
So that is...
Two A.
Two A.
Yeah.
So my understanding is we're gonna vote right now on everything except Item K, L, and Two A.
Yes, please.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Would you like, a motion for Item Two A rather than wait till later. Is there a motion to approve Item Two A?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second discussion. Anything else, Ms. Robinson?
No, I would just say that I think we need to be very cautious about moving this road off of our comprehensive plan, and I just didn't feel uncomfortable doing it.
Okay. Any other discussion? You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. And the other two items we'll see at Item G on our agenda. That takes us to Recognizations, Reports, and Presentations. That's Item C1. And at this time, I would like to invite Chris Knowles of the North Carolina Department of Insurance, Office of State Fire Marshal, to join me at the podium.
Ms. Robinson, good to see you. We're very proud of what we do in Cary. You see these TV shows all the time about what bad code enforcement does. We don't see Cary on those TV shows, thank goodness. We have great code enforcement that protects us from fire and all other kinds of damage, and we're very proud of that. And to recognize this month as Building Safety Month in Cary is an honor and a pleasure for me, so at this time, I'm gonna read a proclamation that does exactly that. Whereas through our continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and sustainability in the built environment that affects our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, we are confident that our structures are safe and sound. The International Codes are the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation. They are used by most United States cities, counties, and states. These building safety codes include safeguards to protect our public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, fires, and earthquakes. Vigilant guardians, including our building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, and others in the construction industry work year-round to implement the International Codes to protect all of us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council and Foundation to remind us about the critical role that the local code officials who work hard to ensure that we have safe, efficient, and livable buildings, which is in keeping with this year's theme, "Code Officials Keep You Safe." As we observe Building Safety Month, we are proud to acknowledge the essential services that our code officials provide to our community, which protects our lives and property in Cary. Now therefore, I Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, do, on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council proclaim May as Building Safety Month in the Town of Cary, and I encourage all of the citizens of Cary to participate in the town's Building Safety Month activities in local Lowe's Home Improvements stores during the month of May. We applaud all of the Cary staff for the roles they play in building safety. We extend our appreciation to them for enhancing the quality of life of all of Cary citizens by providing for their health, safety, and welfare. Proclaim this ninth day of May 2013. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I hope you have remarks. I do want to say one thing. You know, when you're talking about town buildings, it's very important to realize they're not only safe from fire and every, but these are places to go in times of emergency, so they have to be special. And so, we do a great job at that, and I'm, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Absolutely. And it's interesting. The code actually recognizes, you know, the importance of some of these public buildings, and it takes so many of these things into consideration. But first of all, thank you for inviting me this evening. I really appreciate being invited, and this is a great opportunity to receive something that has taken a lot of work and a lot of consideration. I appreciate it. And, you know, on behalf of the Department of Insurance, you know, I want to commend the action of the councils in recognizing the code officials and their dedication, diligence to building safety overall. You know, in our office, the architects and engineers where I work, you know, we talk about protecting buildings and safety, and we talk about the measures between fire and measures between earthquakes and snowstorms and such, and quite honestly, we're considered kind of a glass-half-empty type of group, you know, so we're not the cheery people that we usually see in a lot of social functions, but, you know, seriously, we start talking about, you know, we start talking about, you know, the chances of fire, and the unfortunate thing is, is that, you know, and with everybody who's within the sound of my voice, one out of four people are going to experience a fire that's large enough to make a call to the fire department. And, you know, a much less number of people will experience, you know, hurricanes or perhaps an earthquake, you know, a much less number of people with earthquake, I hope, but still the vigilance of code officials makes everything, you know, stay in the same importance to make sure that all of these buildings remain dependable and remain safe for everybody's use in a later time. What we do at a state level would not be effective without the strong partnership with jurisdictions such as the City of Cary. And, you know, we do truly appreciate the City of Cary's efforts in bringing awareness to the built environment, the critical roles in building, fire, and code officials in general. And I want to thank you on behalf of the entire staff, the North Carolina Department of Insurance, and the Office of State Fire Marshal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. We're now at the second item under Recognizations, Reports, and Presentations, and at this time, we'll recognize the Town Manager for his presentation of the proposed budget. Mr. Shiger.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council knows, as your Town Manager, it's my responsibility this time each year to prepare and officially present to council a balanced budget for your consideration. For those of our citizens, or any members of our audience, or citizens watching at home who might be less familiar with the operations of town government, I'll point out that the Town of Cary's annual budget is a work and financial plan designed to implement the Town Council's vision for our community as articulated in the organization's mission statement and goals and initiatives. And those documents are available online for the public to review, as well as included in the budget document. The budget is divided into two parts, divided in many parts, actually, and there are many ways to kind of look at it, but the primary way that we look at it and present it is in two parts, capital budget, which funds bricks and mortar projects like roads, buildings, and utility lines, and an operating budget, which funds the equipment, supplies, vehicles, and the staff, all of our people, that are necessary to run programs and facilities. State law requires that the Town Council adopt a balanced budget by June 30th since the new fiscal year begins on July 1st. As you are aware, local government recovery from the 2008 recession continues to lag well behind other economic indicators. This is true most everywhere. I think individuals, our citizens, everyone at this table has experienced that and continues to. It also includes, unfortunately, right here in Cary with the town government. In fact, and based on all my experience with North Carolina local governments, this has been one of the most difficult budget development years for Cary in decades. From investment earnings to sales tax revenues and everything in between, it's been extremely difficult to find what we need to maintain our high service levels, not to mention addressing pent-up community demands for more services or expanded services as we have grown as a city. With this in mind, my recommended fiscal year 2014 budget totals approximately $304 million. That is capital and operating budgets together. My proposal holds new operational spending to 3% and staffing per capita to 2,007 levels, even though more than 30,000 people have moved to Cary and required our services over that time period. However, I am recommending a 5% increase in building permit fees and a $1 rise in the monthly solid waste fee, as well as two additional cents on the property tax rate that voters approved in November to fund the Cary Community Investment Bond Referendum projects, and I will talk about those and the other fee recommendations in just a moment in a little more detail. Also, and in keeping with the council's direction for rates smoothing, Cary utility customers will again see a rise in rates to help pay for Cary's share of the state-mandated Western Wake Regional Wastewater Management Facility set to come online in late summer or early fall of 2014. My proposed 4.7% increase equates to about $2.83 more per month for a residential customer using 4,500 gallons of water. As I said earlier, we divide the budget into two basic parts, capital and operated. On the capital side, I'm recommending approximately $102 million capital plan for the coming year, the largest portion of which is $66.4 million to expand the Cary Apex Water Treatment Plant, a project with a two-year construction schedule that will be financially supported in part by the towns of Apex and Morrisville, as well as RDU Airport and the Wake County portion of the Research Triangle Park. Expanding our water treatment plant from 40 million gallons of water per day to 56 million gallons per day is a critical but very expensive part of our capital program this year, and I am proud of our successful water conservation program that has contributed toward our being able to reduce the size of this expansion by eight million gallons per day compared to our original projections. So while that decline in usage impacts operating revenues, there is a longer-term benefit in not having to be able to build the capacity to supply that water with the decrease. Other projects funded in my capital proposal are $4.1 million for a Morrisville Parkway interchange to the Triangle Expressway, $4 million for street resurfacing, which is $2 million more than we normally request, and part of that reason is we have held back for so many years in addressing all of our street resurfacing needs that I'm recommending that we double that for this year. And $3.27 million for a town-wide conversion of all street lights to LED technology, a change that is expected to save the town about $600,000 annually in electric cost. The payback for that project is approximately five point five years, and then we begin realizing those cost savings going forward from that point. Additionally, work is already underway on many of the 17 capital projects approved by voters in the November Cary Community Investment Bond Referendum. Therefore, I am recommending implementation of the associated tax rate increase that was part of that election. As a result, Cary's property tax rate would rise to two cents, would rise two cents to 35 cents per $100 valuation, a tax rate that would likely remain the lowest in Wake County. To pay for the remaining portion of the community investment bonds, property taxes would increase another two cents in 2015 as planned by the council. My proposed operating portion of the budget totals approximately $201 million. To help cover the 3% rise in new spending, I am recommending two fee increases. The first adds $1 to the town's monthly solid waste and recycling fee, taking it from $14 to $15 per month, and I would note to the council and our citizens that this fee has not risen in five years. The additional monies will be used to help go to a reserve fund that will be used to purchase the large capital equipment for this service. My second recommended fee increase, as I mentioned earlier, is a 5% rise in the price of a building permit, which has remained unchanged for more than a decade. There is a position included in my recommendation that is associated directly with this increase. If approved, the increase would take the cost of permitting fees for a 4,000-square-foot home up $54, from $1,080 today to $1,134 beginning on July 1st, should council approve that recommendation. As for personnel, my operations plan proposes approximately 30 new positions for the coming year. Nearly 60%, or almost 20 of those positions, are required to operate the Western Wake Regional Wastewater Management Facilities that I mentioned earlier, coming online in 2014, so it's necessary this year to move forward to hire that staff. These staff members will be funded, and the cost of funding the staff members will be, will come out of the water and sewer fund. Other positions include a full-time domestic violence detective, a multi-trade building safety code official, that is the position associated with fee increase, and a recreation specialist for a program to address children's with disabilities that has been before the council for probably the past four or five years. And I will say a little bit more about the opportunity we had in order to move this program forward, or in order for me to recommend that to the council this year. These additional positions would bring the town's total staffing to just under 1,200, or about 8.3 staff members for each 1,000 Cary residents, which is again, one of the lowest staff-to-citizen ratios in the entire state. While I'm recommending 30 new positions, there are still many more that are needed to provide relief to staff members who have been going well above and beyond the call of duty for several years. Once a source of pride is our mark of efficiency, our employee-per-thousand ratio has been so low for so long, that has now become a symbol of just how in need of additional personnel resources that we truly are and what we truly need. This has, to some degree, impacted service levels, but I think I can make this recommendation this year, but I believe council needs to pay attention to the longer-term staffing needs of the organization. As is noted earlier in the message, we're really still roughly 2,007, 2,008 staffing levels, and that's been nearly four or five years ago, and we have grown in population anywhere from 20,000 to 30,000 people. So additional demands on the staff have continued. I would like to briefly highlight some of the recommended positions that I have not already mentioned and provide a little more detail on some that I have. I do want to point out that four of the positions recommended are in the Technology Services Department, includes network analyst, a TS specialist, technology services manager, and a TS project manager. In my opinion, this is one of the areas of our organization for primarily internal work to serve our departments to make us more efficient, that we have fallen far behind of where we need to be. I believe we need this year to take advantage of being able to put these positions on. I'm recommending all four that were requested. Would also like to point out that we had an opportunity, you will see in the list in your budget materials, where we are converting a downtown program specialist to full-time regular. This is an opportunity that we had with a part-time position, where we have to be very careful about the hours worked for that person because of the part-time status. However, with the opening of the Cary Theater and the inner relationships between the page walker, the Cary Theater, and also the Cary Art Center, taking that position and making it full-time and developing a little different supervision arrangement for those facilities will increase our efficiency extensively. We were afraid that not doing this, the alternative would have been, it would also incorporate, coordinate events and festivals downtown would be part of the work plan for this person, to have a big involvement in that, and we were afraid if we did not have this position that we would probably have to curtail some of the events that we have developed and implemented as part of our downtown program. So that's the purpose and reason for recommending that. I mentioned earlier the fee, recommended fee increase. I would also like to point out that those, and maybe that was mentioned, those fees have not been increased, building permit fees have not been increased in 10 years. We actually took a look at this probably about four or five years ago, but right at the time when the economy nosedived, we did not feel it was appropriate to put that fee on at that time, simply because all builders, developers were pretty much struggling, and we felt like we didn't want to add any additional impediment. That scenario is changing a bit. We feel, I feel comfortable with this recommendation and have so made that to council, and it will support this multi-trade code enforcement official. This again is a position that will maintain our service level. We were concerned and probably would had to eliminate our 24-hour promise to schedule inspections if we did not have this position. So a situation where there is good and bad to it. It's a positive sign that we are getting busier, and so we need to put this individual on. However, money is still tight. We have not seen the full results. I think of the growth that we're starting to see come back, at least to some extent, but feel that it's necessary to put that on, that position on in order to preserve that service level. There is also a customer service code enforcement official requested. This position will assist not only in the, not only in inspections in permits, but throughout our development process, would also involve planning and to some degree, engineering in coordinating better our permitting process. Council has had a lot of discussion about this over the past year. It has been a little bit of a problem coordinating some of these, particularly for smaller businesses, and one of the reasons that it is being recommended aside from that is that it has increased the demands on my time in being able to work through these issues with our department directors. So this person, we believe, will help significantly in smoothing that process out and being more responsive to our customers, particularly the small business customer in the, in the community, and in particular, even a smaller subcategory is our downtown effort, where we're seeing increased interest in that area. I will not mention the others. They are listed here and listed in your budget materials, and you can review those, and we'll certainly discuss those if council desires to do so at our work session. Another feature that I want to point out for council that we are using this year that gave us what I would call, I think staff would call a little bit of breathing room in order to move forward with some positions. I think at the time that we shared some of the preliminary thinking on the budget with the council, our situation was even tighter than what I'm reporting right now. with the council, uh, our situation was even tighter than what I'm reporting right now. Uh, so one thing we have done is to look at how we can manage our debt in order to help us with the operating budget and relieve some pressure, uh, on the overall budget, but in particular, the operating budget. Town currently has, uh, six million dollars' worth of remaining general obligation bond debt outstanding that was borrowed in two thousand and three for transportation and park projects. This debt becomes callable in June of this year, two thousand and thirteen, which means that the town has the opportunity to pay it off without penalty and eliminate the related two point two million debt service payment in each of the next three years. So not only do we, uh, achieve a little bit of, uh, relief this year, we'll see that in the following two years. And that begins in fiscal year two thousand and fourteen with this budget. It is recommended, I am recommending as part of the budget, uh, recommendation that the full six million, um, balance be paid in July two thousand and thirteen with existing transportation development fee and park payment and lieu fund balances. This will create operating margin in fiscal year two thousand and fourteen and provide some capacity to fund positions, some of those that I have outlined to you. Uh, in addition to the positions, vehicle replacements and in particular, maintenance, um, initiatives that other not wise would not be possible. Uh, this was particularly concerning this year to us as we came to the first level of budget reductions, and in order to get even further reductions, uh, we were cutting in severely into some of our maintenance program that we really did not want to do. Uh, paying off this older debt will allow us to address, uh, a significant number of those needs, um, as well as some of the positions that I talked about. However, I do want to caution that this does not really get us, um, it helps greatly, but it's not get us in the position that I think we need to be, uh, in the future. Generally, you'll find your budget materials arranged, uh, in different formats and in different ways. What I like to sometimes do is talk about sort of a programmatic approach, uh, to what the budget is doing and maybe encapsulate what some of our major things we are doing this year. And as I said, they are twofold, uh, but there are so many smaller things, uh, it all adds up to a lot of work and a lot of things we'll be doing. But I think the two major things we'll continue to focus on, if I understand council's direction, is the downtown project. Uh, and in addition to two questions that were on our bond referendum and two bond projects for Academy Street and for Park Development on the, a lot that is across from the Cary Art Center, uh, we will, I'm recommending, uh, one million dollar funding, uh, to dedicate funding for continued implementation of some, uh, improvements, uh, other impactful developments to the downtown area. Approximately seven hundred and forty thousand of the one million recommended would support downtown infrastructure and physical improvements, while the remaining two hundred and sixty thousand would support an infrastructure feasibility, uh, study that is also designated for the site across from the Cary Art Center, uh, Art Center and is, um, directed towards looking at some utility improvements for that entire site. And council has already, uh, considered that issue. That money is contained there. Uh, each of these improvements will certainly be brought before council before we proceed with them. Uh, perhaps the best way to describe them is that we would continue to do infrastructure improvements that might be associated with, uh, new development. And I think it is important to point out that this year is the first year of what we consider, uh, a significant shift in our efforts, uh, toward the downtown develop, development, where we will put more emphasis, emphasis on encouraging and supporting private development to be a part of downtown. We have done significant public improvements, and the only major one left to do of, uh, really major significance is the library, which is funded by Wake County. Uh, but we have, uh, as council has directed, the renovation of the Cary, uh, Art Center, uh, the Cary Theater, uh, you have approved a park, um, and also the, uh, improvements along Academy Street. So we'll be working on the latter two this year as well as these, uh, facility improvements here, and we'll focus more on encouraging and working with private developers to support that effort. The second thing that I think, uh, is important to point out because it will take a lot of staff resources, uh, I think council attention as well as our Imagine Cary effort. As council is aware, uh, the funding for this project has been appropriated, but we will continue throughout the year and beyond this coming fiscal year and to even to the next one, to continue to work with that program. So that will take a lot of our, our, uh, resources, uh, and occupy a lot of our attention, I expect, over the year, and I consider that one of our major, um, programs that we'll be working on this year. There are many other capital projects as well that are significant that time doesn't allow for me to go into great detail with. They're included in your budget, uh, materials that we will, that we can discuss at council's, um, pleasure at our first and potentially second work session. I would also mention, uh, significant, um, effort and, uh, I think, um, desire of council is to look more, uh, in a more focused way at our technology and outreach to our citizens. Uh, council has, um, appointed a special committee to take a look at those, um, those issues that surround that. Uh, we took their recommendations, as council knows, and we prepared an implementation, uh, plan and provided that report. Uh, I would let the audience as well as, uh, the viewers at home know that that is online, available for viewing, and encourage everyone to take a look at that. Uh, I recognize that this is a strong desire and has been a direction of council, uh, for us to look at that in a very focused and concerted way. Uh, I have not recommended, uh, any of those steps in this year's budget, uh, because of the priorities I believe that need to be addressed first. Uh, however, I would like to continue to have that dialogue. We have a plan. I think it's a good plan. I encourage everyone to take a look at it, um, in a great deal of, uh, detail. Give us your feedback on that, and I hope throughout the year and perhaps for next year's budget, uh, we can look at taking some major, uh, steps, uh, toward addressing some of those needs. Those are the major points of the budget, Mayor. Couple other items to mention. Our first budget work session is this coming Tuesday, May fourteenth at five thirty PM in the police department training room. Uh, I plan to review both the overall operating and capital recommendations as well as the new positions being requested, as I have mentioned earlier. We also have another work session scheduled on the calendar for May twenty-one at five thirty PM if needed, also in the police, uh, training you, uh, training room. There are other, uh, work sessions planned in, uh, for future times, just in, in the event that we need that, uh, in the event we need those meetings, and that will be, uh, certainly at the direction of council as to whether we, uh, need to continue with those. As we did last year, these work sessions are not in our usual location, so to, uh, make sure the public understands that. Uh, this is because the budget work sessions tend to involve significantly more staff and citizens, so we thought a larger space would be more comfortable. We're just a little bit cramped, I think, in the back room, so this, uh, room will be a little more accommodating. Uh, for those in the audience or watching at home, work sessions are open to the public, and we encourage your attendance, uh, for the debate on this budget as council considers it. In addition to attending work sessions, we invite citizens to comment on the proposed budget during May, um, twenty-third and the June thirteenth regular council meetings. Uh, I strongly encourage that, and we are grateful for the, um, responses that we had to the preliminary, uh, budget hearings before we prepared the budget. We got many, um, very good recommendations, and we appreciate the time and effort the citizens took to submit those, and we encourage those comments, um, during this period of time, May twenty-third to June thirteen. The budget is available on the town's website, and printed copies can be viewed here at Town Hall, at the downtown Cary Public Library, and at the West Regional Library in Cary. Any changes council makes to my recommended budget will be listed separately, as we have done in previous years, and voted on in conjunction with the entire budget at council's meeting on June twenty-eighth. I want to finally, uh, give a thanks, uh, to the budget staff, Scott Fogelman, our budget director, the entire budget staff, Stacy Techie, Josh Edwards, Elaine Huntley, and also the town of Cary staff. I think as council knows, uh, we put an extraordinary amount of, uh, work and energy and thought into this budget, as does the council. Uh, it is virtually a year-round document now, uh, and so important because it does indeed set out our financial and work plan for the coming year. So I want to extend a special thanks to the budget office. It is, it, you, you have seen your materials sitting there. It's like this. This is not an easy, easy document to compile. Uh, it takes a lot of work, a lot of coordination to make sure that we have things out in the proper format so the public can read it, understand it, and debate the features, uh, in it. So my thanks to the budget staff, also all of the department directors, uh, and their staffs who've done an extraordinary job in not only preparing, working with the manager's office, the budget office, uh, to bring their proposals forward, but in how they have managed their budgets, uh, throughout the year. Uh, they have done that with less staff and less resources than ever before, I think, in Cary's history, compared to our population and the services we provide for. So for that, I am grateful, and I'm grateful to council for the direction that we get, uh, each year and being able to put together, uh, the budget. Mayor, that completes my presentation, uh, of the fiscal year fourteen recommended budget.
Thank you, Mrs. Shiver, and I also want to echo our thanks on behalf of the council. We know the work that goes in behind this budget, and it's very much appreciated, and it's shown the last several years, when we get to budget time, we don't have a lot of work sessions because a lot of the hard work's already been done. So we really appreciate it, and we can focus on specific issues. We don't have to dig through the entire thing. Even though we do, we don't have to, uh, worry about a lot of hidden details and problems because those usually been ironed out, and the recommendations usually help us a lot. So, thank you very much, and thank you to the budget office as well as, as the rest of the staff.
Thank you, Mayor. We now move to item D. This, the next two agenda items, item D and item E, uh, are public speaks out and public hearings. We've included instructions for speaking at these forums on the printed agenda, and if you'd like to speak at either of these, I would ask you to please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public speaks out speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing this evening. We have the public hearings listed on the PowerPoint slide. We would add, we would like to thank you in advance for holding your comments for public hearings to the public. For public speaks out, we have a three-minute time limit, and I'll have to enforce that time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the podium, and the speakers will have three minutes in the beginning. The light will be green, and when there's thirty seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow, and then when your time expires, the light will flash red, and that time I'll immediately interrupt you and ask you to conclude your comments. I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our guidelines. I'll now open up the public speaks out for the first speaker who would like to speak on any item that is not a public hearing and would invite them aboard at this time.
Hi, I'm Lori Miller. I attended the Imagine Cary Summit on the Future this last Thursday, and I would like to share just a few of many similar citizen comments with you. Citizens should have been involved earlier in the process before the one preferred design was decided on. A lot of time and money were put in before citizens were brought in. It seems you have already made up your minds. A little citizen input would be nice. It seems the design is fixed and these presenters, with these presenters, and they are only going through the motions to satisfy the council's requirements to do so. Plans seem set. Public interface should be earlier in the process, true of all Cary projects. This happens a lot. Were these comments from the summit on the future? No. They were from a public information session that Cary held in two thousand and nine. I shared these comments with council back in two thousand and nine at a public hearing. Five of the current council members were on council then, and here we are, four years later, nothing has changed. Cary is still holding public information sessions, as it always has, just on a larger and much more expensive scale. This summit was a fantastic opportunity to get real input from the more than nine hundred citizens who registered. Cary's planning director called it the biggest public meeting ever conducted in the history of our great community, and this opportunity was squandered on propaganda. And I'm referring to propaganda in its most basic sense of presenting information primarily to influence an audience, often presenting facts selectively rather than impartially providing information. Why do you think the speakers kept reminding us that they were not there to push a particular point of view, and that the featured speaker repeated over and over again that he didn't care what we decided? Which, by the way, was insulting and idiotic. Every attendee mentioned in yesterday's Cary news story on the summit agreed that there was an agenda being pushed, whether or not they agreed with that agenda. You have also received email expressing concern with how the summit was run. After the first few, didn't you at least say to yourself that maybe you should reevaluate, reevaluate this process? Or did you just dismiss them as utterly ridiculous? If you want to keep the support of the citizens, you need to support those citizens. This whole process needs to be reimagined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Weinbrecht and members of the town council. My name is George York, and I am president of York Properties of Raleigh and agent for the Village Square Shopping Center here in Cary. I'm here to express support for the Boulevard zoning case, which I think you'll talk about later. As you know, we are making significant new investments in this part of Cary and have been part of this neighborhood for about forty years now. We've just broken ground on a new Harris heater anchored redevelopment of our project and feel that the area around Cary Town Center will again become one of Cary's most vibrant mixed-use centers over the next decade because of its proximity to Cary's downtown core and convenient location just off I forty. We're excited about the future of our project, and Lenore's proposed development will greatly benefit the retail space in this area because of the type of consumers that a high-quality residential project such as this attracts. We believe that the highest and best use of this property is a residential development such as the Boulevard, and hope that you will support the case. High-quality retail is driven by high-quality residences. The proposed project will contribute to residential density and strong demographics that will further stimulate commercial redevelopment and development around the Village Square, Cary Town Center, and downtown Cary, transforming this area into Cary's vibrant mixed-use core over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Weinbrecht, town council and town staff. My name is Ian Henshaw. I'm a citizen of Cary, a business owner, and I was chair of your technology task force. So you know, I'm here to talk about technology. And I'm here to say, I think the process we had for technology task force was, was flawed in a way. Uh, task force was directed to provide a list of how the town should facilitate electronic citizen engagement, uh, communication and consumption of content. You convened a great group of thought leaders. Your task force provided a long list of recommendations of what the town needed to do to join the communities leading in the use of technology. Your task force did not have time to give proper advice on an implementation plan. And I've been looking over the information I've received from a public information request, a presentation to the ISAB, and I'm a little troubled. The dollar roll-ups on the options must sure be giving you sticker shock, given a tight budget year. Technology is a wonderful thing. Implemented correctly, technology provides lower costs, better efficiencies, and bends the cost curves down. And a few of the items in the budget options stood out to me. In option A, there was a mobile item, a mobile under, uh, item under mobile, C-tran Real-Time Transit Information. Well, the second week of April, an app called Transload went live with our C-tran information, so that's already done. And on, on, option B, under mobile as well, the R-Greenway app was listed. On May the first, the Cary Greenway information went live on the R-Greenway app, so that one's done. And then an option D, and I would go all the way here because, you know, given the And then on option D, and we go all the way here because, you know, given these options, you might do A, you might, might do B, but getting to D, no, you probably won't do D. But under community and facilities, there's participate in Code for America. Well, Code for America is a civic organization, and Cary is already participating in Code for America. We have formed a Code for America Brigade, and we're working with Code for America Brigade in Raleigh on a regional basis. So the benefits of technology implementation are unexpected and immediate. So I've given three items in the proposed budget that were mostly already completed. And from the information I have, the savings from the R-Greenway app alone would pay for a trial license of an open data program to allow Cary to join the open data movement happening right now in the Triangle. So CRADA is a program used by the White House, the World Bank, about a third of the states and many innovative cities, and it provides a high level of data analysis to our ordinary citizens. Economic data right now is economic development. I note town staff is aware their proposals need to be modified. The proposed task force implementation options really need a thorough review by town staff and council. And I believe other cities that have been successful in technology adoption process have done so by implementing programs that are start small and build from there. I expect the town council and town staff will reach out to those on the technology task force to review the proposed implementations towards finding a suitable start-small-and-build process for the Towne of Cary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henshaw. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for a public speaks-out? I see no one. All closed. Public speaks-out. And we'll move to our public hearings. That's item E. The first one, and it might be our only one, is the Stormwater Master Plan Public Hearing. Mr. Clinton of our staff will introduce and present this item, then we're going to open up the public hearing. Speakers will now have up to five minutes to voice their comments. The council will not take action on this item tonight. We're going to refer to our planning and zoning board for their recommendation. Mr. Clinton.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This is a public hearing on the town's Stormwater Master Plan. This plan is an important document defining the path forward for stormwater management here in the Towne of Cary. The plan is also a tool that can be used to define and explain our existing stormwater program, as well as investigate key and unique components of stormwater here in the town. The plan identifies a variety of opportunities, as well as tools, that can be used for the future, for future stormwater management. The overall planning process has taken approximately 15 months. It began with an introductory public meeting to obtain feedback from citizens. Once the draft was complete, the plan was presented to town council to obtain comments. We also presented to and received comments from the environmental advisory board, and the current draft was modified to incorporate those comments. The schedule for the master plan includes a public hearing to be held during this council meeting, and then we will go to the planning and zoning board for comment and return to council for consideration on July 25th. Staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and refer Stormwater Master Plan to the planning and zoning board. I'll be available after the public hearing to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. This time, I'll open up the public hearing for the Stormwater Master Plan, and I would invite the first speaker forward at this time. Anyone to speak on the Stormwater Master Plan? I see no one rising to speak, so we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I'll just say real fast that this is, I read through this as I was getting ready for Cary Matters, and I just wanted to thank our staff for their excellent work. And this is not one of those sexy documents or points of conversation that everybody's talking about, but it is so critical for quality of life, and it's the type of forward thinking that our staff is doing that makes Cary such a great place to live. So I just want to give you my commendation and tell you thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Smith?
No.
Seeing no other comments, as Mr. Clinton said, the planning and zoning board will pick this up in June, right?
Yes.
And it'll be back to us in July. Thank you, Mr. Clinton. We now move to committee reports. This is item G. We remove, we're, item G, council removed landscape improvements to the performance screen on Academy Street from the consent agenda at Mr. Francis's request, and this is listed on the item originally as item B-3K. And before I turn it over to Mr. France, Mr. McRaney?
Wait. Do you want to do?
Did I skip an item?
You kind of did, yeah.
Okay.
You want to do first the, isn't that right? You want to do the contract award first for 2009? Maybe I'm wrong. No, you're right. I'm wrong. Yeah, landscape improvements to performance screen. You're right.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. Let's move forward.
I'm totally off. Don't listen to me.
So we're going to do the landscape improvements for the performance screen. I would just like to make a few comments before I turn it over to Mr. France. I know that we've all received a lot of emails. I've gotten emails and phone calls, and they're saying, "I love this. Don't you dare touch it." And then the others saying, "Get rid of this now." And so to say the least, it's polarizing. What I do hope tonight, as we discuss this, is we don't become art critics. And I thought about why this is so polarizing, and I think one of the main things is the location. And I tried to think of the most perfect thing that I would like to see, and if it were on that spot, how I would feel about it. And I just picked something out of the air. I like tennis. I said, "Statue of Roger Federer. Would I like that there?" No. And then I actually asked Mr. France, I said, "So if there was a NASCAR put out there, would you like that?" And he said, "No." So to me, it's a location issue, and it's a polarizing piece of art, and I would hope that we would center our discussion around that rather than turning into art critics because I think that leads us down the wrong path. And I know I prefaced all this, and I apologize for that, but it is your item, Mr. France, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. To me, one of the reasons I've actually pulled this is I see this as two separate discussion items, not one. One should be the discussion of whether or not to landscape the performance green.
Right.
Regardless of whether the art's there or not. To me, landscaping the performance green makes all the sense in the world. We're going to be using that for the next couple, few years before we ever start developing a park for all of our downtown events, lazy days, car, I mean, you name it. There's going to be all kinds of stuff happening, downtown concerts. I think landscaping the green makes a lot of sense. I don't know if we want to just handle that topic first, because I'd actually like to break this into two separate.
Yeah, divide the issue. That's great. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the landscaping of the performance green exclusive of the piece of artwork.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. So my understanding of this, and Mr. McRaney, you can jump in any time, is if it were landscaped around the art piece, that landscaping could be used when we go to the permanent site plan, which is a couple of years away. So it's not wasted landscape either way.
That's right. We're proposing grasses around the fire sculpture, and those hollies within the site. All that would be utilized when the park would go under construction.
And so what you've said makes a lot of sense to me, that why not go ahead and landscape no matter what? And then we can talk about the art piece later. And so I agree with you.
When you say later, you mean?
In about a minute.
Okay. I assumed we'd vote on this much. You was putting it off for two years or?
And when you said exclusive of the sculpture, you didn't mean landscaping exclusive of landscaping by the sculpture. You're just talking about landscaping. We'll talk about the sculpture.
Regardless of the sculpture.
Whether the sculpture was there or not, let's landscape the performance.
Okay.
Okay. Other discussion? All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Still your floor.
Thank you. Regarding the fire sculpture, I do want to preface my remarks that I think the events, the week-long festivities, the fire burning part of it, the whole community involvement process, I think that was a wonderful event. Job well done for the staff. I think the community had a lot of fun participating in this. It was just a good event for downtown. But the event's been over for quite some time now, and we're now left with a piece of artwork that's kind of out of place in its existing location. I don't think anybody on the council actually wants to just destroy the artwork. I think we would like to move it, or I would, at least I would like to move it to maybe a more suitable location. I understand that there are concerns that if we move this piece, that it will damage or destroy it. But I'm not so sure I entirely buy that, and I don't know that that's reason enough for me to just say, "Okay, leave it where it is." Actually, speaking with Ms. Bush earlier, she did a little homework on some of these sculptures that were done in other municipalities, and I think two have actually relocated theirs, and they moved them. I know for a fact, when we were redoing the front-of-the-art center, those big brick pillars that were out front, they actually had to be picked up so that work could be done underneath them. And one was actually a broken one that was picked up and then reset back down. So I think it can be done. What I would like to see us do is direct staff to begin the process of trying to relocate this piece of art. If it gets damaged, it gets damaged. We hope it doesn't. But to me, I'm a little frustrated with it because there's art placed all over town, downtown, and it's always temporary in nature. And, you know, it comes and it goes. It can be moved. This one was sited there, none of us knew that it was going to be a permanent installation until construction, and it had to be moved. And I feel misled that we were not informed of that, or the community was not informed of that. So I really do hope that we learn something that the next time we contract a piece of art, we make darn sure we can move it. I think there is a place in Cary for this sculpture. I really do. Just not where it's sitting. And I'm not willing to landscape it and tolerate it for a couple of years because we don't want to hurt some people's feelings. I hate to say it that way, but that's just how I look at it. So I'm more than happy for other comments, but I would like to see us direct staff to begin the process of relocating the artwork.
And Mr. McRaney, could you speak to who's contacted you about, or who you've contacted about moving the art and the difficulty with doing that, so we're all informed?
Yeah, we met with a structural engineer on site, and we also contacted two moving companies. And we met with one of those on site, too. And we even talked of waiving, you know, potential costs or impact if it did, you know, in terms of warranty, whatever, if it did collapse. And they just weren't interested. They felt that, looking at it, that it was too fragile, and the chances of it collapsing were too great. And so, you know, we have looked into that.
And their discussion about collapsing, are they saying it would crumble into pieces, or it would break into two pieces? Could it be put back together? And I know I'm asking you stuff you probably can't answer, but...
I know. I think that, I think internally with some of the staff, the feeling is that if a crane picks it up and maybe moves it on site, not that that would keep anyone happy, that's possible. There isn't necessarily agreement with that. But to place it maybe on a vehicle and move it to another location, I think the feeling is, is that the shaking of it, you know, would, and no one, I mean, we don't know whether it'd be two pieces, four, or 400, you know? I think the feeling was that it would collapse. So.
Which then, I guess, leads to another concern that I've heard from a couple of citizens, is the public safety aspect of it. You know, you've got a big, tall, heavy structure that's got a big crack in it, that if it's so fragile, what keeps it from blowing over and landing on somebody on a really windy day or, God forbid, an earthquake?
Well, we had that discussion with a structural engineer on site. I think the feeling was that that concern was not, I mean, the engineer did not feel that that was going to happen. And so I think our feeling was that if we were to keep it on site for the short term or landscape it, that we were okay with that in terms of safety to the public, because that was certainly looked into. So, I mean, the feeling is they're two different things. And leaving it on site, again, only maybe for the short term, we were okay. But it's a much different thing to, you know, go underneath it, pick it up, and move it in terms of the forces and the stresses on it. So.
When you say leave it on site, there are 13 acres there. Anywhere in the 13 acres, I mean, that's a lot of land.
Well, let me just say this, because, you know, in the staff report, what the request was, that, again, going back to the public art plan and the so-called deaccession process, and that is that what staff was asking for is if a decision is made on the public art, you know, staff was suggesting to council that let's base it on a reason and not necessarily on opinion. Because you can, I mean, the Eiffel Tower, when it was constructed, it was considered eyesore, you know, in Paris. And now, so, I mean, opinion changes, and so the whole purpose for that policy was to protect art from public opinion. So having said that...
We're not necessarily talking deaccession, though. We're just talking relocation.
Well, that, I know, I understand that. But, and, Mr. France, that's fair. But the request was, you know, let us go ahead with the park plan and the planning process, and, which will take, you know, several months, number of months, and once a final decision is made on the park, town square, then we would, could make then also a final decision on the status of the fire sculpture. And I think, Mr. France, I think the issue is, we don't think it can be moved. You know, we think the moment we go in and whether we bubble wrap it like some people suggested or whatever, the moment we try to move that thing, it will crumble. And I think the final determination of moving it, we feel, should occur once a plan is in place, and the town then can kind of defend that, you know, that a new purpose, you know, was developed for that space that did not, that either did, does, or would, either will or will not include the fire sculpture.
So I guess, Mr. France, the question would be, is there a problem with waiting for two years till we have a plan of where it could go from your estimation? And waiting and still doing, as we all already voted, the landscaping, but waiting for two years till we have a place? Move it then? If it moves, great. If it breaks, so be it.
I don't understand how waiting two years alleviates the concerns of it being damaged during moving.
Because you have to move it twice, because they don't have a final place to put it right now.
No, I would suggest we would find it, and I would really hope that the final place might not be in the downtown park.
Right. But the farther we attempt to move it, the less chance that it has to, you know, to survive.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought that you meant moving it somewhere very, very close.
Well, we, I think that would be the goal. If we had to move it, we would try.
Somewhere on that property.
And when you say till we have a plan in place, that doesn't necessarily mean till construction begins. We're going to have a plan in place, I hope, before two years.
Yes, yes. I mean, we're hoping that, I mean, I think the next staff report that was pulled in terms of the schedule for the park, late summer, early fall, we'll come back with concepts, master plan, you know, we have to meld those into a concept, into a plan, it'd be probably fall, late fall, and then the site plan would start. So there's different, there's different time periods that if council wanted, we could come back and place the two years. If council felt that, for example, with the master plan for the town park, if that, if you felt good enough that, okay, we've made a decision on the future of that so-called town square site where it currently sits, then, you know, a decision could be made of what to do with the fire sculpture.
And that would fall under one of the criteria in the deaccession process.
Yes.
Ms. Akon.
Thanks, Doug. In the staff report, though, it actually says at the time of construction. It does not say at the time the plan is approved. I'm reading the last sentence under discussion before you start the heading, the public art advisory board, and then lists those seven or eight bullets. And you just said at the time of, and I hear you saying we could do whatever we wanted. I hear that. I'm feeling a little like we're kicking the can down the road. I'm feeling a little like we're kicking the can down the road, though, and, you know, by waiting two years. I hear you say maybe with the park design, we might make a decision that there's somewhere on this site that this piece would be appropriate and fitting, and therefore, why move it and take a chance it breaks when in reality, we might move it 20 feet and it would be okay? And that's reason enough to wait? I hear you say that, and I'll certainly take that into consideration. So, to go to another clarification that's really important, you know, Don, I'm sorry we have to admit this, but Ben pointed out to me that actually, we did, we were told, anyway, it was in our budget materials for fiscal year 2012, that this was going to be a permanent installation. We may have missed that point, we may not have grasped it, but nonetheless, it's in the written budget materials, so, at least on that point, I thought it was important that we know that we missed that, or we didn't take that into account for now, but we were told, I've got it right here if you want to see it, we were told that, yeah, pass it on down. That actually it was a permanent art installation.
Was it a permanent installation where it was fired, or just a permanent installation where it ended up?
To be permanent is where you set it, so that's where it was set.
I think the original intent was at its current location.
Really?
Yes.
Now, I agree, you know, Jennifer said, said something to me recently that I totally agree with. You know, we've, this, what a great learning experience to know what it looked like before firing it, what it might reasonably look like afterward, might have helped us in terms of citing this for the firing, and some, we got an email from someone today, made an excellent point, that you had it, set it somewhere for the firing that was going to be safe, and allow people to be near but safe, and all these other things. So, when you think about that, I totally understand where it is. But I feel like to, you know, it's not, it's not wrong to leave it, it's not wrong to take it down, but to just delay this decision for, until we get the park design done, you know, feels a little like kicking it down the road.
If I may add, Ms. Akon, you're, you're correct, because it does state that, at time of construction, and I think staff is merely trying to show some flexibility, given the situation. So, I just wanted to add that.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I was just reading the staff report. Let me ask you this, when is it reasonable to think we may have a park design? And I know that's actually coming up in the next, maybe too early to ask that question, but, because that's the next item that was pulled for us to talk about.
Well, every time I've given a schedule for all of our projects in the past, I've generally been off. Let me just state this, I think that, I think that upon when we submit or put place in front of council, the master plan, the, the plan, the illustrative plan, where the, to the point where council says, okay, go ahead and start the site design process, I think we would know at that point whether the fire sculpture could be incorporated in, or whether we would propose moving it somewhere else onsite, okay? That, I can tell you, if I give you a month or a date, you know, December of 2013, probably not, January 2014, hopefully, you know, as we get into early 2014, we really need to be getting very ready to get into site plan. So, around, so that's five, six, five, six, seven months, maybe.
You're saying, I'm sorry, can I ask a follow-up? I'm sorry, Jay. My follow-up question would be, so at the time we say go forth and design it, we would have some sense of where this belongs? That doesn't, that seems too early to me.
Well, I mean, it...
Seems like you wouldn't know where it might belong until you see the design and say, here's what else there is.
Even then, you would think that there'd be grading involved, I mean, just to move it to another site, you know, another location onsite, early could end up having it be moved twice because of grading needs.
Right, and construction around it and everything else.
You know, this is probably not germane to the conversation, but it's really hard for council members to grapple with such a tight budget as we have, and then spend money on controversial public art. This is, it's really hard for us to defend, and I would just like to state my preference going forward, and I've stated this before, is that as we go forward with our public art, I would love for it to be a little bit more universally accepted than pieces that are thought-provoking or challenge thought of the community. Because when that happens, it's just really hard for us to defend as council members. And this is one of those times where it's very difficult. We have a lot of people who believe that the artwork is, at this juncture, not an asset to our downtown. In its location, it's not a good, it's not a good location for that site specifically. And, you know, we're looking at keeping something just because of fear that it can't be moved, and when we're getting so much criticism about it, and it makes us, it makes me personally a little bit more gun-shy about our future art projects.
I understand. But we're not recommending landscaping merely out of fear of moving it. It's, it is an art piece completed by a known artist, and I think what we're saying, staff is saying that we have an approved plan, public art plan, and there are processes part of that, and we're just saying that we think that's important. And, you know, we understand, again, that this is, this has been polarizing, but for the long-term benefit of the community, you know, in terms of the arts, that urging, following that, that process would be good. I will say this, I mean, talking to the staff who've gone around, who go to conferences, who go to other parts of the state, we've even heard from other parts of the country, you know, Cary's starting to get known for some of these efforts we've made, not just in the cultural arts, but in public art. And what value that has, you know, I don't know, but, but, you know, there's a number of people in the arts community who look up to Cary because of, you know, of pieces like this and the efforts we put forth. And I think what we're requesting is, is it's certainly out there where it sits, 11 feet tall, it's stark, and, and we think with a little more of a natural setting around it, and the budget's there, it's approved, it was approved originally without even the fire sculpture for the landscaping, we think it'll give it a natural setting, it'll soften it, and it'll get us by, I don't know, maybe six to eight months till we have a, till we have a plan in place, and then council can make a formal decision.
Mr. Smith, please.
Oh, sorry. Just wanted to bring up a question that we asked at operations for the rest of my colleagues. In this performance, performance screen, is the sculpture in the way of anyone enjoying the performance screen? So, if we had, the, the stage was set and we had a full, you know, a full house, are there people that would, their view would be impaired? Is it in the way of that?
No, it's not. It's, we've had two events. It's set back far enough that the, I think we've had 200 to 300 people attend the two events there, and they fit in, they fit in, they sit around it, and obviously, they sit most in front of it so they can see the stage, if not all of them, but it's not, it's not impaired, the performances or the events there at all, so...
Mr. Smith?
You know, first of all, Ms. Akon, I really do think we're kicking the can down the road. This is just a tough one. There's an irony, today I received an email from a former council member, we're sharing her opinion, and as I'm reading it, I'm looking to my left, and there's a little knick-knack on my table that when she left, she, she gave each, I don't even know if we got the same one, but she gave, gave us each a little knick-knack and a cartoon, and the cartoon has a character there, and there's two doors, and one says damned if you do, and one says damned if you don't. Maybe it said darn, but I thought it said damn. And I think that's, that's what we're in right now. You know, I've, I've come to grips that no matter what decision I make, a part of the community is going to tar and feather me. It's just a North Carolina tradition, I guess. I don't know. But I think somehow, we've got to suspend some thought for a minute and look at the bigger picture. You know, I think it's, it's very helpful to know that it was in the budget the other year. Times change, things change. We're right now trying to bring closure to the park situation. And when you talk to people, if they're for a larger park, smaller park, it doesn't matter, they're at the point where it's do something. And what I'd rather to see is, is that we don't spend two more years analyzing what we want for that park, but we go ahead and get that decision done, and I think some of that's going to be solved as we get to our next item here. But in the end, I think what I remember from the work sessions, regardless of what we wanted that to look, we wanted a park that was Cary unique, to Cary standards, a, basically a wow factor, something that, as you said earlier, Mr. McRaney, people look at us nationally now for our quality, and we want that in our downtown park. And, and I'm sorry, but no matter how you look at it and how you dice it, the key to that, that is going to be the entrance and the look and the feel as you come into town. And that, that art effect is right in the center of that. And, you know, in my, my personal opinion, is the greater good of Cary and the greater need for how we want Cary to be recognized is going to be for that quality park with a high standard, and this art, you know, there's something called collateral damage. You know, this doesn't, it doesn't work. Maybe the intent was there back when we did it. And I fully recognize, I do not want to discourage artists from coming here, I don't want to denigrate any artists, I think you're right, Mayor, we shouldn't get into, you know, is it good art, bad art, you know, ugly art? Art is designed to challenge our thinking. It's designed to challenge how we look at things. But we've had a pretty good process here. A lot of it's temporary, we, we move it around, and, and just frankly, if this can't be moved, I'm not into this word deat, whatever it is, de...
Deaccession.
You know, it's, it's, the word is crumbling. I mean, what's going to happen is if we try to move it, the high likelihood is something's going to happen to it. And for us to spend a lot of time, as Ms. Jennifer said, where we're going to, we're in a tight budget, and we're going to spend all this extra money to study temporary things and other things, you know, from my perspective, recognizing there's some safety, potential safety features, you know, I don't mind putting it on life support for a year, but I want to, I want to see us get, get, solve the problem by getting the park resolved, and that vision to help unify Cary on that park, and what it means to Cary, and what it does to our economic development vitality, and kind of put this to the side. Now, I have no qualms if today we say, that's got to move today, but I have come to grips with, you know, for a period of time, spending no more money than we would with doing the landscaping there, you know, dealing with it on a short-term basis. But I think the issues that face us about, we have betrayed some trust, or we have changed our mind, we do that. Times change. And I don't thi, I think it's up to us to convey to that community that we're not here to lose their, their support or lose their trust, that this is just a decision that you have several good things, and the overriding force right now is downtown development and how special that park's going to be. And I just frankly think this is in the way.
Ms. Akon?
You know, I just wouldn't be true to myself if I didn't say this. So, you cautioned us, Mr. McRaney, not to be swayed by public opinion, but the truth, truth of the matter is, we have our own opinions about this before I ever got an email one, or for, you know, phone call one. We have our citizens' opinion, and then we're told what the national opinion is out there. And I think when it comes down to it, we have to decide. It's not about what the people across the nation think. I don't think, you know, if, if your whole reputation hinges on one decision, it's not a very robust reputation, is what I would say. So, I wonder if we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to direct staff to begin developing a plan to relocate the fire sculpture.
Second.
There's a motion, second discussion.
I presume by that you mean to another site that is...
To a more appropriate site.
To a more appropriate site, and bring us, bring back to the council.
Bring us options.
And I would ask Mr. McRaney, I know he's working with staff on this, are you clear about that? What, do you need more?
No, I just, I think, I think the process would be that we'll have to take it back to the Public Art Advisory Board to review that with them, and they'll, I just want you to understand that that'll be part of the process, so...
Part of the process of reciting it?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
Yes.
Because I think we're clearly saying, and the motion's clear about what we want, whether it passes or not's another thing, but the motion's clear, I think.
Okay. Other comments?
You've already looked into moving it. Do you think in, in your heart that there's really still may be other, other options?
In my heart, do I...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it'll survive the move, but we're, we will, we will do what council's, you know, we will obviously can do what council has requested, but...
And you'll come back to us with that recommendation or those options before you?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries six to one.
Thank you, Mr. McRaney. We next move to discussion, contract award for the downtown park project that council removed from the consent agenda of Mr. France's request. This is listed on your agenda as item B3L. Mr. France, I'll turn it over to you for your questions.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last work session, when we'd actually discussed the downtown park, at the end of that meeting, we directed staff to bring, you know, go work on, bring back concepts for six, seven, eight acre parks. I don't think any of us were aware that this was going to take months and months of hiring outside consultants and design teams and firms and all that. I think we were looking for more general concepts, kind of like what we've seen on the three to four acre proposal, to just giving us an idea of how that might look or feel, and then we could kind of pick elements out of these different proposals that we like, and then tell the design folks to go work on that. I don't think we're ready yet, well, let me rephrase that. I would hate to spend $209,000 to a company to develop three separate proposals that comes back, and we don't like any of them, or we like one piece of this one, and one piece of that one, and one part of this one. I would like us to have one more work session on the topic, iron out some, you know, get some focus or consensus, and...
You're on a mine meld with what the operations committee...
That's what the operations committee recommended, is that we go ahead and recommend that we award this contract, but do not begin work until after we have had at least one, if not a couple, work sessions to iron this all out, so that we're not wasting money going back and forth, back and forth, and having a lot of expensive revisions, so...
But how do we know it'll cost $209,000, then, if we hone this down to something more definable? Is it up to $209,000, is that?
The proposal here, the $209,000, and you can look at the three proposals that came in...
It's the appropriation.
Right, it's appropriation of $209,000, and the recommended company came in lower than the other two bids, but that, right, that estimate there, that appropriation, is not just for looking at six, seven, or eight, it's to actually help us do the design work that will come later. So, we can only imagine that if 2009 was going to cover ideas for a six-acre park, a seven-acre park, and an eight-acre park, if we can whittle that down in advance, it wouldn't be in excess of that, we'd be giving them pointed direction.
So, another, we'd go over the appropriation and hopefully be lower, because we'd be more specific about what we want, we'd have less...
See, that's kind of what I'm thinking, is if we were more specific in our expectations, they're not developing so many different proposals and doing so much different work, that $209,000 number comes down.
Right. And right now, we're just, the council has not given our staff clear direction at this point, so I think it's premature for us to go forward with having the design work begun.
Mr. McRaney?
May I ask a question? When the work begins, even with the work session, would there still be three concepts?
Maybe not.
We might find at the work session, we narrow down to one, this is what we want, we'll do it.
All right.
You know, one that I'm still very fond of is the library concept, that has a library and parking deck and stuff on the site, and still leaves that seven acres for parkland.
I think, Mayor, may I say something here?
Please.
I would expect that if we have a work session on this, and given the detail that council wants to get into, we need to know, when we leave that room, however many work sessions it takes, whether the library is going there, or whether it's going somewhere... sessions it takes, whether the library is going there, or whether it's going somewhere else, whether you want a water feature in there, and the kind of detail that we can understand. One of the things I'm a little surprised at is that, as far as I know, this approach we have taken with the park is what we do with every park.
That's correct.
Do we know of anything different? So I don't, I'm a little confused as to why council does not understand our process. This is what we have always done. This project, along with the streetscape, is especially important, at least at the way we looked at it, and we thought we had direction from council, is that these two projects needed to have some close cooperation. The southern end of Academy Street is going to be critical to what that park is going to look like off of the street. We've got two different firms, they're essentially two different projects. You've got Parks Project that are being done by a Parks firm. You don't want a Parks firm doing a street, but they converge at the end. So that's one of the reasons that we solicited proposals from the two firms, and our intent was to have those two firms work closely together, because that's going to be very, I think, a lot of challenges to design and make sure that that works together. So I guess what we would want to be clear as we go into the work session is that council has a vision, whether that's a four-three vote, a, you know, five-two, a six-one, or a seven-o, whatever it is, you know, we need to know those specifics, because if we go in and a decision is not made about the location of the library, or if, if it continues to be up in the air, and then we decide to put the library after we've designed the park, you're going to have to redo the whole thing, or pretty much the whole thing. So I think, you know, we should, we should be careful and think about that, and from what I can tell, in some real level of detail that we don't typically get from council in the past. So I just want to mention that and make sure that as we move forward, you know, we pay attention to that, and that we come out with a real clear direction.
That's our expectations and hopes.
But that's not what we've done before, so we're a little confused about that.
Yeah, but this is a pretty unique site. I mean...
I understand that. I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with it. Just understand me that we're a bit confused about it. We've, the question has been raised, why are we proceeding this way? It's the way we always proceed.
It's the first time we've constructed a park that we've actually talked about development within the park. I mean, every other park throughout town is kind of, you know, we go, you go to a park.
Nothing else there?
We, we, it doesn't have the, the, oh, I'm not sure what the word.
Kind of an integral part of the development of downtown.
Downtown, yes.
I don't see how that's different.
I think we're, I think we're in violent agreement here.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't.
I think it's, I really appreciate your remarks, Ben, but I think it speaks to our sense of responsibility that we get this right, and that we, and that we're not going, and I know sometimes we feel like we're going this way and then this way, but it's just this heavy sense of responsibility that this is so critical. Not that every park's not important, Doug, but I think we all feel that this is just, you know, been talked about for so long. This legacy's been passed to us by the people before us to try to, to make this downtown something special, and I think that's what it's about, is the sense of responsibility.
And I think that the council weighs in typically when Parks Department comes to us and says, we want to acquire a site for a park. It could be 14 acres at this cost, or it could be 18 acres if we include this. We usually give them guidance on what we would like to see happen. In this case, we have a block, and it has yet to be determined how much of that block is going to be a park. And I think it's, it's critical for us to look at this and really understand what we want for development and what we want for a park as the first step before anything happens in developing any kind of park.
I totally agree with you. I think we all do about siding the library. That's critical. If we design, you know, approve a park design and then say, oh yeah, by the way, shoehorned the library in, how, you know, that would be ridiculous.
We've never made a decision.
We've got to do that on the front end. We've got to make a decision. And I think you're absolutely correct about that.
And do we have a standard size for libraries that's dictated by Wake County? I mean, that will determine our park site.
$13 million is what you've got from Wake County.
Whatever that buys.
We would work with Wake County if...
So is it appropriate, then, for us to appropriate money?
Well, we asked that question at the operations, and you said it would be an appropriate step for us to appropriate the money, but Gail raised a very good point to me, which is, if we think that this amount might, the work might cost less than 2009, are we committing ourselves to paying 2009 even if we don't get?
I was gonna, I was gonna add on what Mr. Shire said in terms of, this is somewhat typical, the process. If, any of you remember the recently approved Carpenter Plan? Well, if you, when we went through the process, they produced three concepts. Oh, and so, so developing concepts is, we always would do that, and, you know, because you don't want to give the public, if you give them one concept, you've made a decision for them. And so the expectation even before, now granted, we might not have come back with a six, seven, eight, but I think the expectation that when we would come back to council, even before the work session, that we would have had concepts for you, because that's just, it just, it's much better. Because you, because, Mr. Francis, what you do say is you do say, I like, I like aspects of A and these aspects of B, and then that's, and then you mold those together, and then you begin to have your plan. So the, in talking with the consultants, the, they're still going to be a considerable amount of legwork. They've got 10 years of concept plans to go through, to review, and kind of mold some of that stuff together. The fee will not change appreciably from what it is.
Trying to catch Harold's eye. Could I ask a follow-up? Okay, so I totally get the concept stuff, but I'm reading the staff recommendation that says, award this money to these people for professional design and construction administration services. To me, that sounds like a higher level than bringing a concept drawing.
Well...
And am I reading, am I overreading it?
No, it, given inherent within the design is, you have to go through the concept.
So it's all just?
That's right.
It's the linear, okay.
Next, next time we'll lay it out.
I hear that there's a lot to each step, but I just, okay.
Because after the concept, we'll have a master plan, and then that becomes the basis for the design.
Okay.
So, and let me, I'd like to add one more thing in terms of process, because the, I think the comment was made not to have any work begin, and if council were to decide to approve it, I think the staff's request would be to not limit that work, because number one, we, we need to get a survey done for the site. I mean, we want to get this thing going as badly as, as council does, but there's a lot of legwork to do that. And that'll, the result will be a delay of another maybe two months, and so the request would be that if, if council does approve, that we could get working, consultants then can attend meetings. Coordination meetings have already been set up between the two teams for late May, starting early June, and I just, I just want to make sure that there's that freedom. I mean, nothing will be created.
So when we use the term, don't do any work, we're thinking, don't get granular, and you're saying, there's so much other stuff to be done, the surveying and all that, and we don't intend that to not be done, that preliminary work that sets the stage for the design. I don't think that was the intent at all.
There'll be no concepts done before, before the work session.
Okay. We're good.
Are we ready for a motion?
So we want a motion? So I want to include, do we also include in this motion to have a work session prior to making the decision as well as the appropriation, or you just need the appropriation?
We, I think we'd like the appropriation.
Okay.
To move ahead to the, yeah.
Okay. Then a motion to award the contract to Cole, I forgot the name already.
Cole, Janest.
Cole, Janest and Stone.
Yeah.
A second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGraney. We're now on item H, old new business. We have three items associated with the Boulevard, including rezoning 12, REZ 23, comprehensive plan amendment, comprehensive plan consistency and waiver request. The applicant has asked that the staff include the details of both the rezoning and the waiver request in their presentation to give council then an opportunity to discuss both before voting on the separate issues. When it's time to vote, we'll take individual votes on separate items, on this, each separate item. The council tabled the rezoning at our March 28 meeting, so we need a motion to remove this item from the table.
So moved?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we've removed the motion from the table. I mean, we've removed the item from the table. At the March 28 meeting, staff gave a detailed presentation on the rezoning, and we'll ask Ms. Beerman to now present any new information that we've had since that meeting. And I believe there's also going to be the applicant talking about the new items as well, and following her presentation, Mr. Jensen of our engineering staff will present the waiver request. Ms. Beerman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few points to reiterate. This is the request that would rezone approximately 92 acres. It's owned by the state of North Carolina on the north side of Cary Town Boulevard. It is a portion of a 273-acre parcel that does extend north up to East Chatham Street and includes the Wake Med Soccer Park. This shows the notification map within, for the property owners that were notified at the hearing, the hearing that was conducted on May 28, and we did not receive a protest petition. Existing zoning, office institutional. This just shows the site in the context of the mixed-use overlay district for the Cary Town Center. The proposed zoning of the mixed-use district. The proposed land uses in Pod A, up to 400 single-family and townhome units and about a six-acre park site. And then in the portion east of Trinity Road, we would have non-residential uses that could include a variety of non-residential and plus up to 100 condominium or townhome units. Since the public hearing on March 28, the applicant did make several changes. The changes in Pod A included the addition of a commitment for a clubhouse and a pool. Also, the number of community gathering spaces would be increased from two to three. Specific statement that would limit, or that would require access of at least 95% of the units from a rear alley, and also a commitment that siding materials would be cementitious or cement-like materials such as hardy plank, or brick and/or cultured stone. In the Pod B portion, there was an increase in the commitment for the non-residential square footage from 50,000 to 100,000 square feet, and also an additional development option that included a more vertical mix of uses was added. And there were also some changes related to the contribution toward the extension of Trinity Road and a disclosure statement regarding future acts, future traffic on Trinity Road that would be provided for future homeowners. This just shows the graphic for the Pod A conceptual plan. The lower graphic in this, of these three, is the new, the new concept that was added since you last saw this item. There are several requested modifications to standards that are included, or that would be included, included in the rezoning action. These include dedication of parkland rather than making a payment in lieu of dedication. There's also a proposal for reduced streetscape widths along Trinity Road, Cary Town Boulevard, and the Collector Road. And also, the modifications would allow street trees to be located in some of the right-of-way as an alternative street sections that are proposed. And I'll turn it over to Jerry now for some additional revisions or modifications that are included as a separate action.
Good evening, Council. We have prepared a, a separate staff report that outlines two requests by the applicant, applicants. One is for a request for making a payment in lieu of construction for a small portion of Trinity Road extension. The other request is to make certain modifications to our engineering design standards and specifications, and I'll go through those very briefly with you. The first one is regards to making a payment in lieu for Trinity Road extension. The small part of the road, as I've got it pointed, is about 300 feet long. It's on the northern part of the, of the project. It's currently unbuilt at this point in time. In your packet, staff report, there was a justification statement provided by the applicant of, of how the payment in lieu was derived and why they believe that is appropriate. In addition to the payment in lieu offering by the applicant, they are also willing to dedicate any additional right-of-ways or construction easements that may be necessary in the future for the extension, further extension of that road in the future. The street modification standards, there are, there are four modifications that they are requesting. They consist of increasing the maximum tangent length that we allow currently for our residential streets to provide, we provide that standard to provide curvature in our, our local roadway, so we keep the speeds low. The second request is to modify our roadway sections that would, in the, in the first sense, would, on the Collector Road that runs east-west along the backs, on the northern part of the project, they would like to have on-street parking on that particular roadway. And associated with that is that sidewalk would be pushed up against the parking stalls along that roadway and along local roadways, so there wouldn't be any grass strip that we normally have in our engineering standards. And this is keeping in what they term as a traditional neighborhood design or neo-traditional design. The third request that they're asking for modification to is our spacing of our median openings along Trinity Road and our Collector Roads. We generally have a guidance of spacing of 1,200 feet along those types of thoroughfares and collectors. They're asking for a modification to reduce that. And then the last modification that they're requesting is for a reduction in the right-of-way for what they term as a one-way public roadway. They'd like to reduce that from our standard 50-foot right-of-way down to 37 feet. Associated with this staff report, staff has made a recommendation for your consideration. The first recommendation is that town council accept the payment in lieu as outlined in the staff report. The applicant dedicate 126 feet of right-of-way, the, that extends through the entire property for Trinity Road extension. The applicant dedicate any additional right-of-way or construction easements for the future construction of Trinity Road, and that those dedications be offered at no expense to the town. The fourth item concerns the, the street modifications. We are recommending approval for the tangent length roadway sections and median opening spacing modifications. In regards to the fourth item concerning the right-of-way width, we would like that request denied on the basis that we need the right-of-way to, outside of the curb and gutter to maintain not only our utilities, but street lighting or anything else that may occur. So the spacing that, that, in their standards, just wouldn't allow that to occur. And that presents a staff report regarding the waiver and the modifications, and be glad to answer any questions at the end.
Okay. If Ms. Beerman has done, we'll invite the applicant forward. You have more?
I, I, I could just skip the issues that you've seen before, and would just like, would like to make a couple of staff observations just to sort of summarize. And then just two staff observations that we think are important in this case. First, that the site is in a key location that we feel like could support more intensive development, and also there is continued concern with the proposed parkland dedication that was expressed by Director McGraney at the last meeting. So I just want to point those items And with that of the, that would conclude staff's presentation. If the applicant would like to speak.
Okay, very good. At this time, I'd invite the applicant forward.
Mayor Reindberg, Council, I'm going to apologize first. As I age, I can't memorize anything, and I also have a hard time seeing, so just bear with me as I lay all my stuff out here. Quick clarification on the parkland dedication, if I could, before I begin. It's a partial dedication that we're talking about and partial fee in lieu. So that was just something I wanted to clarify as we start. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Trish Hansett. I am lucky to lead a really talented group of people at Lennar as their division president. I have been in the real estate market in the Triangle for over 30 years, and during that time, really... And during that time, really have been honored to spend time in a lot of great Cary communities. In the 1990s, I worked for the Resolution Trust Corporation and was involved in the sale of the Preston asset to SASS. And I spent a lot of time after that on the sales floor at Preston, telling everybody about all the Cary greats as they walked over through my door. So that was really fun. 2006, in a previous position prior to Lennar, I worked hand-in-hand with Cary and bring in the first Martha Stewart community in the country to Cary, which was a great thing to do. And really today, I think we have an opportunity to continue Cary's legacy of providing premier communities and housing choice to this many people who desire to call Cary home. When we, when we first embarked on the planning for the Boulevard, top of mind for us was adherence to Cary process and procedure. As such, the guide for our planning was the current adopted land use plan and the published plan for the Regional Activity Center, which includes the property that we're talking about today. Over many months, time and dollars invested, the process included multiple meetings, presentations, and community visits with staff, Planning and Zoning Board members, and several members of the Cary Town Council. The overwhelming message through all that was of support for the community with tweaks made here and there as we went through. Formal support was issued by the Planning and Zoning Board in February with a 6-2 vote in favor of the Boulevard. Then, four days prior to the first council hearing, and with half a million dollars spent in due diligence for us, we received our first news of opposition to the community and that maybe it would be good to shop the property. In the months' time since the rezoning application was tabled for further rework and discussion, our company, Lennar, has made the effort to research other possible, more dense opportunities for the site. Most of you know Lennar as just a home builder. During the last year, Lennar has opened up a multifamily construction arm and is currently in the process of opening a commercial entity to remarket distressed assets that were purchased during the recent downturn. By engaging the individuals that head up these business segments for Lennar, we prepared a lot of sketches and financial models to research the viability of a higher-density mixed-use for the Boulevard, only to arrive at the same conclusion as others who have spoken on our behalf. Today, the market and surrounding incomes do not support the use. In your recent summit on the future Imagine Cary, and I wish I could have gone lacrosse game, couldn't make it, but, you know, reading the Cary news, it stated that the keynote speaker, Chris Leinberger, a fellow of the Brookings Institute, argued that the market will demand more walkable urban space and that Cary should respond by increasing density in some areas, converting dying malls to mixed-use spaces, and seeding the area with alternate forms of transportation. It is our understanding that CBL, owner of Cary Town Center, has reached out to the town to discuss a recently commissioned feasibility study for the modernization and repositioning of Cary Town Center. Increased density, the Boulevard. Conversion of a dying mall, Cary Town Center. Now we need to work on the transportation. You know, I can't walk in your shoes. I know that you guys have got a really hard job. Planning for the future is difficult as markets shift and local economic conditions change. I believe you have before you a rare circumstance where you have property that can be renovated from an institutional drag on a declining area to a combination of vibrant mixed-use and higher-income residential. You have the ability to shape the future of the Regional Activity Center adjacent downtown and this property. On the other hand, you have the opportunity to relinquish control of the site back to the state. As I'm sure most of you are aware, I wasn't until yesterday, I'll be honest with you. When the property was put on the market, the state was compelled to sell it by legislation that has since expired. If Lennar does not complete this purchase, the state is free to utilize the property for its own institutional or office use. It is our understanding that in the event Lennar does not close on the property, the state does not intend to remarket same. What I hold in my hand are letters that you have all received from adjoining property owners who have written in support of the Boulevard as the right plan and the right vision for this property. I'm here asking you to join them in that support. An approval for the Boulevard tonight allows the town to influence development of the property, avoids potential repercussions of having a state institutional use on the property, solidifies a major investment in the future of the area, and sends a clear message to current residents and business owners who have made major investments and reinvestments in Cary that the town supports their efforts to restore the Regional Activity Center to vitality. A vote yes this evening is a vote of affirmation for a project that has been widely embraced and supported by the Planning and Zoning Board, residents, and adjacent property owners as a catalyst for the revitalization of a struggling area. I very much appreciate your time and your ears tonight and in the future. Thank you.
There's nothing else from staff, I'll open it up to council members.
I have a question regarding process. Are we to take up the rezoning question first, or are we to take up the?
Rezoning first. And if the rezoning passes or fails, then we're going to do the comprehensive plan of consistency. If the rezoning passes, then we're going to do the waiver. Am I correct? Yes.
Do you need a comprehensive plan and consistency statement in either event?
Right, that's what I, in that order.
I guess my question is, or my concern maybe is a better way to put it, is say, for example, we vote for the rezoning, and then the statement of reasonableness, but then we don't approve any of the waiver requests, which makes, which might make the project not economically viable, causing the applicant to not develop the property and then revert back to the state, which the state now ends up with properties owned residential and not O and I. It just seems to me like we're kind of doing it backwards. I'd feel better doing the waiver request first, and depending on how those shook out, the applicant says, do you still want to go forward with the rezoning or not? It's just, if I'm a business guy getting ready to dump a ton of money in this thing, I want to at least know it's viable before you rezon. And I think the state would probably want to keep it O and I if it, if Lennar's not going to do anything with it, so.
Ms. Simpson?
I, Council really doesn't have authority to make that decision on the waiver until it's been rezoned. But I think it would be fair, given the circumstances here, to discuss it and, you know, maybe give the applicant an opportunity to see how Council feels about the waiver request.
Let me make an analogy. It's like saying what color car you want that, what color car you're going to get when you haven't decided to buy the car. I feel like the way they have it set out is actually, sounds legally correct, but also the way I conceptualize this. That's why I go into the details of the waivers if the rezoning doesn't pass, for instance. Is that what I'm saying?
That makes sense.
It makes sense, yes.
And I, and I hear what, I get what you're saying about the, the person who is offered to, you know, the person who's offered to buy this land is not the applicant, the state's the applicant. So you're saying the person who wants to buy the land may go, hmm, not such a great deal after all. And boom, there you go, state's got residential zoning when O and I, yeah, I hear you. But it, neither way, that, that way doesn't sound totally linear to me either, so.
Can we, in the same meeting, pull back the rezoning request if the waiver fails?
You know?
No, you have to go through the whole process.
Could move to reconsider?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Actually, you're correct. You could, the, the person in the prevailing side could move to reconsider, as long as it's immediately done in this meeting.
That's, okay, so that's an option, the way I understand it. So if the waiver fails and you feel that they're not going to do this, but I don't want to leave it residential, and you voted in the affirmative, the way I'm understanding it, you can make a motion to reconsider. And then if we reconsider, we can vote to?
The other way.
I'll, I'll open up our conversation on this. Looked at this quite significantly, and after all of my time looking into this and everything I've seen, I believe that it is in the town's best interest to keep this land zoned O and I. We have very few parcels in our town that will be able to support an, an office and institutional development. And I think it is, this has excellent access to Route 40. So not only is it a large undeveloped site, but it also has great access, and it is ideally situated to be office and institutional. And I think when we put that zoning on it, we were going in the right direction.
Okay, other comments?
I'll bring up the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You had, you were, you were.
I'll just bring up the concern I had at the last meeting, and it still exists, is I'm concerned about having 400 homes that are off of a major, potentially major exit route to Wake Med Soccer Park. And having all of those cars basically drive by the front door of many of these homes on, on a pretty often basis, concerns me of putting, putting them that close. We, we receive, well, maybe Jack receives the most, the highest number of calls from Cocoa Booth folks who, you know, might be upset about the traffic or the noise. And on a good Railhawks night, it's, it's pretty loud. Now, I understand that if they move in there, they know what they're getting, but sometimes as venues do well, and many of the Cary venues have done even better than expected, you know, the, the popularity of them increase, and then the noise and the traffic increase. And that, that concerns me for future residents.
And I will add to the concerns that have been raised, that I agree with the staff observations about this being a key location for O and I development, that more intensive development is really needed in this parcel. And when you talk about, you know, I really appreciated Ms. Hanchet's remarks. I thought they were very well done and very well thought out. But when you think about the walkable urban areas that she described, to me, walkable means more than walkable within your neighborhood. And even the staff report says on page 19 of 23 under its analysis, since the site in question does not include, in quotes, "short, safe, and convenient pedestrian links to the other main quadrants in the Activity Center," the land use plan recommends that a, quote, "mix of commercial and or office and supportive higher-density residential uses should be provided in this same quadrant or the same side of the arterial." It needs to be walkable to the other quadrants in the Activity Center, not just within its neighborhood. And for that reason, I believe it should remain zoned O and I.
Mr. Yurha?
I wasn't going to vote in favor of this last month under any circumstances when it, when it came to us, primarily because it is such an important site, as, as the staff has pointed out. It's a site that will and should change the character of this part of town, a part of town that really does need a character change, in my opinion. I thought we needed more information, more research. I've received more information, I've done more research. And a month later, I'm still not 100% sure that this is the right plan for this site. But I am 100% sure that I'm never going to be 100% sure, if that makes sense. But here are my, my thoughts, and I just listed a few of them. I never disliked this plan itself. I think it needs some work, and some of the things were pointed out here today. What you just said, Ms. Adcock, is extremely important. But I always liked the plan itself. I like Inside Wade. I like the feel of that. I think there's a market for it. I don't think there's a better place for such a plan here in Cary than where it's being proposed. And I do like the changes. In fact, I like every change that was made since last month. I think they were all positive changes. I respect the P and Z recommendation with 6 to 2. I, I know last time they said they weren't really gung-ho, but it, it was still 6 to 2. I've heard no opposition from anyone in the neighborhood, and I've only received letters of support. That means something to me. So often, we hear opposition from everybody, and we, we sit here not knowing what to do. The only opposition I've heard really has come from, from our deliberations. I don't think the soccer park is a real drawback. It might be for me. I don't think I would like to live there. I try to put myself in the position sometimes of, of these decisions. I don't think I would like to live there, but I don't think I'm typical. I think there's a lot of people who, who would like to live there. And it's unlike Cocoa Booth, where a lot of the residential was there when Cocoa Booth came. This is there, it's expanded, you know, who knows, it could expand again, but nonetheless, it's in a pretty expanded form right now. And if people move in there, they're going to know what they get. They'd be pretty stupid if they didn't. Although there certainly are other possible uses that I, that I hear talked about that would certainly give us a better tax base for this area, I'm just, I haven't yet been convinced that any of them are really going to come to pass anytime soon. And if they are, I suspect there will be some additional issues that will be caused that are different than the issues that this one is causing, and we'll be debating those. If I'm wrong here, I'll be the first one to admit it, and if the noes prevail tonight, I'll be very interested to see what, what comes of this site, and would applaud it if we did get something better. I'm very happy that this is close to downtown. It's not part of downtown, but it's close enough that I think it can really help with our revitalization of downtown. And I'm much more eager to approve 400 single-family residential units here than I would be to approve 400 apartments or condos in a high-rise somewhere downtown. And that's probably going to come to us at some point, too. But I, I'm more willing to, to approve it here. And, and finally, as our speaker said tonight, every, all the research is done indicates that residential rooftops of a certain income level serve as a catalyst to redevelop the rest of the retail areas that, that are there to the, to the degree that we would like them to. We'd like high-class retail there. I just think the residential really does need to come first. I don't think it's the other way around. And we keep in mind, of course, and, and who knows what's going to happen, but if I ruled the world, I might just change this whole area and, and move this here and move this here and move, but I don't. We have to live within the constraints that we have, and I, it's in the back of my mind. The state does own this property, and they could develop it as O and I. I don't know if they plan to, I don't know, I don't know what the details are there, but they could do this, and then we have no tax base whatsoever. So although I'm not 100% sure, I think it's a good first step in the revitalization of this area. And I think it makes a statement to those who may be waiting to participate in the redevelopment of this area, that if we approve this tonight, we really mean business. And I mean that figuratively and literally for this area. So although we're not going to talk waivers right now, the parkland dedication is not part of the, those waivers, I support the staff recommendation on the payment in lieu instead of that parkland dedication. But with that, I think I'm a yes for, for this project tonight. Sorry for taking so long.
No problem. That was great.
Well said, Ed.
I would agree with everything Mr. Yurha said, and thankfully, he said a lot of it, so I don't have to say so much. But I enthusiastically support the project. When I first learned about it, I was thrilled because I can't think of another area in town that needs a kick in the pants more than this one. You know, Ms. Robinson, you said it wasn't going to save the mall at the last council meeting, and you're right. But there's nothing on any one parcel out here that's going to save the mall. There's no silver bullet, you know, but this is a, it's a good, good first start, you know, good first step. It does send a message that we're, we're, we mean business, and businesses need rooftops. We've all been to and seen the Inside Wade project. It's a very high-quality project, and I think that's one thing that we're really looking for in Cary is quality. Demographics are great, average incomes 130,000. I mean, that's, again, something that the area needs. The potential of what the state could do with this is a grave concern to me. I'm not sure how many of you all are familiar with the Blue Ridge Corridor Study in Raleigh. City of Raleigh has a lot of intentions to redevelop that whole Blue Ridge road from the fairgrounds all the way to the hospital. The number-one impediment to that plan, as identified in that study, is the DOT state vehicle. identified in that study is the DOT state vehicle surplus stuff, the big yellow trucks and sand and all that. If Raleigh somehow was to manage to remove those or get the state to consider consolidating, relocating, whatever, could it end up on this property? Maybe. Could it be office buildings? Maybe. I, I don't know. But I feel like we've got a great project here that we could say yes to and not have to worry about any of those things happening. Complies with our land use plan. It's kind of the guidelines that we put out there for folks to play by. As Mr. Yurha stated, P and Z supported it. I don't consider it the only office or large office parcel left in Cary because I'm very optimistic about what this could motivate across the street. I see there's huge potential there. I, I too don't really count the soccer park as too much of a concern. I mean, we've got the USA Baseball Complex smack in the middle of suburbia and it seems to do okay. And yeah, I mean, it's, if they move into these houses, they know the soccer center's already there. So I appreciate them upping the ante on the payment or the contribution towards the Trinity Road extension. I agree with you, Mr. Yurha. I don't support the Parkland dedication. But I don't think that's an obstacle they can't overcome. So I enthusiastically support the project. I would hope that others would do so as well.
If you want to.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess what we're, I think everybody's made up their mind. I think we're just kind of giving ourselves justifications. You know, I liked it the last time. I think since then, I felt an obligation to do a little more homework just to, one, see if assumptions I, I was basing my decision on were valid. And also, I, I really respect some of the other perspectives about the potential of that site. But when it really nets down, you look at the demographics over there and you look at the analysis of the market over there, from my perspective, everybody can look at data differently. And that 800-pound gorilla of the state, which, to be as nice as you can, has a lot of aberrant behavior. I just, I don't want, I want to take them out of the equation. And I think that this is a great project for that area. So Dolbit said, I have to...
I'll make a motion.
Let me weigh in, since everybody else has. I mean, I, I've heard everything and actually agree with almost all of it. What really determined my thoughts are the best use, not only in five years, 10 years, but 20 years, 30 years, somebody gonna, how, how are we going to be viewing this piece of property 30 years from now? How's it going to develop? We don't know if we say no to this. So the question comes down, is this the best use for this land? And I think Lennar has an excellent product. And I would love to see it in Cary, but I just don't think it's the best use of this land. And that's bottom line. And, and the, really, the turning point was a lot of the staff recommendations doesn't have the intensity we really need here. And that really was the turning point for me.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I make a motion that we deny rezoning request 12 REZ 23.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And? Oppose?
No.
No.
Motion passes four to three to deny. Thank you, Ms. Fearman. Now we need to do the motion on the comprehensive plan consistency statement.
So logically, we make a motion to deny, or make a motion to deny the comprehensive plan consistency?
Is that the prepared, there should be a prepared.
Oh, do I have to do the prepared statement?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not in there. Anybody in there already?
It's, it's listed as option B.
Oh, here it is. Okay. All righty. Make a motion, excuse me. Okay. Make a motion that we go with option B. Consistency and Reasonableness Statement 12 REZ 23, the Boulevard, the Town Council of the Town of Cary hereby states, Section 1, rezoning 12 REZ 23 is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Section 2, based upon information presented at the public hearings and by the applicant, based on the recommendations and detailed information developed by staff and/or the Planning and Zoning Board contained in the staff report, and considering the criteria of Sections 3.4.1E and 3.5.2E of the Town of Cary Land Development ordinance, denial of rezoning 12 REZ 23 is reasonable and in the public interest.
There's a motion?
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose?
No.
Motion passes four to three. Thank you, Ms. Fearman. We now move to our second item. Mr. Bailey will present information on the Green Level Interceptor Project bid award. Mr. Bailey.
Good evening, Council. If you'll recall, you recently for this Green Level Interceptor and Pump Station project rejected all bids. We had a couple of bidders that requested withdrawal and staff made a recommendation to reject bids and council did that. This week, we have rebid the project. And you don't have numbers before you because it's so short in timeframe. It was after the staff reports were due. So I'll verbally make the recommendation. There were seven bidders on this project. Staff recommends that we award the contract to Sullivan Eastern, Inc. for the amount of $5 million, $583,830. That was about $264,000 better than our bid that we could have awarded at last meeting. So we feel like we've made a good decision there and would answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Our third item, Town Attorney, Ms. Simpson, will report on the Fairway versus Town of Cary settlement agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to report that the town has entered into a settlement agreement with Fairways pursuant to which we won't pursue civil penalties. And they, in turn, agreed to remove the sign. It was removed by the deadline and the matter's concluded and settled.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. We now need to go into closed session and I would ask a council member to read that motion.
Pursuant to GS 143-318, 11A, 1 and 3, I move that we hold a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town. And two, to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143-318, 10E and GS 160A-168.
Second.
There's a motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion carries and we are in closed session.
[1214.72]